Before we get started, for you all that don't know, this is Afton Von Ty. The Republic Doesn't Know and Bob Spedden is our other leader. I've been here before, so you should know me. I asked tonight that we have a professional meeting, conduct ourselves as professionals, and we're starting out with a clean slate and hope we can get some business to come. Okay, so the agenda. Any additions you want to add to the agenda?
Mayor, can we do a roll call?
Well, normally I just let the clerk do that. Do you all prefer doing that verbally? Or can she just take the roll call?
We normally do it verbally, but that's up to y'all, how you guys want to do that.
Okay, go ahead. And I think you called her names already, so feel right.
Yes, Pamela Harlow.
Yes.
Michelle Covert.
Here.
David Hemstead.
Here.
Bernice QB.
Here.
Bob Spedden.
Here.
Rebecca McGee.
Here.
Afton Von Ty.
Here.
Okay, now to the agenda. For the old business. I know you all were discussing it, and I had gotten some paperwork on it, but because the statement is tabled, since it's not on here, the issue with the Cameron house. Is that tabled?
I'm sorry.
I think it went forward.
I didn't see anything about it.
The attorney sent a letter to Mr. Cameron, and a letter was sent back, and the attorney has asked that it go on next month's agenda. That was as of today.
Okay, so we don't need to add that. For the new business, I would like, this will be our organizational meeting, which I will address new committees, and also add the historic foundation to be discussed on new business. Anything else?
That's going on the menu.
Yes.
Now, our charter provides for us to have our organizational meeting scheduled.
It says when a new council is present, so we are a new council. It can be the.
I'm down on the party, and you're just taking over for the, you're taking over the interim.
Yeah, I'm a new king. Okay, can we get a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Do you do a roll call, please?
So a roll call is done for them to tell you yes.
Or do you have, or am I allowed to say all in favor of this?
You can say all in favor.
By the high, anybody opposed, and then we can move on.
Who opposed?
I did.
We have to keep track of it.
It's still.
So we have two noes. Bob, did you say aye? We're just trying to keep track of the votes over here on our sheets.
Yes, from now.
Yes on no or yes on yes?
Yes, eh?
Yes, okay.
And who made the motion?
So who made a motion? I think Dave made a motion.
Bernice made the motion.
Motion, and Dave seconded it. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, the council paid. Since I'm new, does anybody else have any questions on the bills paid? I haven't seen these for a while, so the Department of Agriculture, you may tell me what that is.
I'm sorry, we skipped over public comment.
Oh, that's right.
No, that's, I just, I'm just trying to keep with the.
Okay, anybody from the, anybody from the public, is I sign up?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna get over here. Okay.
Paul S. Cameron Jr.
Paul Thurgood Cameron Jr., 9376 Frederick Hall Road, Mineral, Virginia, my resident. So, welcome. Sure. I believe I heard something, but can I please get clarification on the agenda? I'm gonna get the right packet. Said that it was tabled the next month, this is the old business. Staffing VDOT trees and this demolition and so forth, county official? Was that correct statement?
So you, the lawyer wrote a letter, and you responded with the letter, and so he want, he's not able to be here tonight, and he has asked that that be on the December meeting because he just received the letter.
Okay, yes, I reached out to make sure that that lawyer was the individual that was representing the town. I did, by reply, I did bring it over. I did not realize that the meeting was being canceled, so I put it in the envelope and addressed it to the town attorney. Also reached out and made sure that I was talking to the right individual. I also scanned and sent him a copy of my reply, but I wanted to make sure that my reply was recorded, it was received, and it has been accepted.
He has your reply, and he's asked that it be on the agenda for next month.
Okay, good. Now, the next thing. Town councils, I would like this letter from the town attorney be corrected. The point to make it clear, sorry if I'm being loud, but obviously nobody pays attention to these meetings. It says that they did not receive a response that you requested, and at the July 14th meeting, which I did attend, and I'm assuming that this paper over here is part of the meeting record of I did, was here on public display to speak. Also, if anybody else wants to see it, I brought my laptop, if you would like to see the meeting and hear that I was here. Excuse me, but I am upset over this because at the last meeting, when you went into closed session, I was here, and we could have easily talked about any of this. So I don't understand why we got to go to a forum of, we got to get a lawyer involved, when I'm a human being and you're all a human being, so I don't know who came up with this and why this was said what it says, and you did not appear at the July 14th meeting, which is incorrect. I want this changed, this is wrong. So is all the communication done like that? I mean, I'm sorry if I'm upset, but this is not right. I did give an explanation, I did say in June, when I, July, when I was there, then in June, it's hard to get someone in this short timeframe to come out to give you a reply. That was my first opening statement, and then we went on from there. Excuse me, now, staff is following, will be it off and remove a tree. No one in this room has any permission, and I go on record to move any of those darn trees. I, my family owns the property, you do not have permission to take these trees down. On record, everybody clear. That, this is ridiculous. Fine white paint sprayed on the trees, what in the world, what's this about? And then I'm being told that the trees are going to be removed. I have not given anybody permission to take the trees down. I told you before, I already went to VDOT. VDOT said they are my tree, or my family's trees, their homeowner's tree. Whatever your intentions are, whatever the water main issue, or whatever that is, okay, that's a problem. But you don't have permission to take down these trees. The next thing for clarification, what I want to make sure, was the town council was considered a time for the building official. So is the building official going to come out or not? I already gave you my response, and I'm going to remodel the house. Why is the building official going to come out? That is a waste of time. I'm just trying to make this clear. I'm sorry if I'm loud and I'm upset, because that, this is not right. And so I'm expressing my opinion. I've told you before, the priorities, my first opening statement. I inherited all of this mess. I didn't create this mess, but I told you that your priorities might not be my priorities, and I have worked on, and I gave a long list of what we already had done with the other properties here in town. Just pay the taxes, the wife said, 22 lots is what our family owns in this, in this town. So I think we've been very supportive financially or whatever, or doing the right thing. And certainly my service across the street speaks for itself. And so, I mean, I try to do things right, but I don't appreciate the information being not correct. And then I, then you get an attorney involved when we're all human, and we can easily speak and talk to each other. So, does anyone have any question?
No, I'd like to make a motion that the July minutes be corrected to state that Mr. Cameron was present.
I don't know that, I would like to call, I would like to talk. The July minutes, I don't think are the problem. I think the issue is that the lawyer sent a letter that I did not review. I was not privy to it because it's from the lawyer, because in a session that we had closed, he was to respond and write the letter, I was not. So I'm taken out of the picture, I do not have anything to do with that, so. I'm sorry, I didn't direct him to write the letter, that, a council directed, council directed the attorney, I don't. Yeah, I can get the July minutes, they're online, and so is the meeting. But I would like to, I would like to say something else. The VDOT, I did go out as the town manager and speak to VDOT and met them outside and measured the road, because I had to do it for a number of reasons, not just because of this, but because of other stuff that was going on in the town. The trees, VDOT has said, do not belong to a homeowner. The trees along the right of way that's 80 foot wide, regardless of whose house is there, do not belong to a homeowner, they belong in the right of way. The homeowner or the town have the right to cut the tree down if they need to. That is what they said, I can get it in writing, it's fine, but that's what was told to me. Council asked that I go get quotes to cut the trees down. I did not do this on my own, this was a council thing. So that's where we are, and then I got the estimates for the trees to be cut down. And then we came here, and now this is an issue, this is a problem. I don't have anything to do with this. The attorney had to write the letter because council asked the attorney to do that. The attorney will be here in December, you can talk to him, and you guys can settle that.
Okay, I have a comment before we move further, since you're making this business. It seems like to me that the owner of this property is willing to move forward and do what we're asking him to do, except cutting down the trees. I would like to hear a motion from council to, number one, take the lawyer off of this case, and let's deal with public, publicly, individually, without having him into it, because I think the owner will cooperate. So is council willing to make a motion to cancel the attorney on this particular issue? So motion's on the floor, is there a second? Are you, you said, can we get a roll call vote on that, please? Take the attorney off of this case.
You can't do that.
Okay, well, you can comment, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying he's in the middle of his comments.
No, I thought you were done.
You go right ahead, you can add them here.
Please take a call, let's, I'll need to discuss. I think you're carrying it too far. Go ahead.
Michelle.
Michelle, no, I don't know what it is, what is it?
Okay, go ahead, we're taking the attorney, we're going to handle it between us and the landowner.
That's what we did for a year.
But you're now cooperating, so go ahead with the, with the vote.
I just say no, I feel kind of fine sided, I was saying.
Bernice. I'm sorry, was that a yes?
Mr. Ben.
Becky.
Abstain. Like I've been doing.
You have to do Afton and David also. Even if they make the motion, they still have to vote.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yes.
Okay, so the attorney can take this off of this table until we discuss it again.
No, I think that somebody ought to be, there ought to be a lot of communication between you and somebody else, not just leaving it on the floor.
So I'll keep up with this particular thing.
Well, Bernice, that, that is, excuse me, that is my issue. I didn't know anything about the facilities down until I see two spray painted white, you know. So what would you do if I came up and sprayed two white spots and, hey, I'm gonna take your trees down, even though they're in the right of way? And I heard what she said about the, the VDOT, and I can contradict exactly what she said when I first started to check with VDOT about taking the trees down, that we were going to take the house down, because I wasn't clear on the right of way as far as the access off of Mineral Avenue.
Can I ask you? When are you planning to start renovation? Is that something you have a new?
So in this letter, it said that for the fall, you didn't get a copy of the letter? So see, here we go, here we go, that's my point.
You can't blame them for.
No, 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 ma'am, no, I'm not, no, I'm just trying to prove the point. So you got a lawyer involved, and even the town doesn't, the council members don't even know what is going on in your own town. That's my whole point to this.
But it was addressed to the lawyer, so I will not open a piece of mail for the lawyer unless he advises me to do so and scan it, which is what I did. And that's where, it didn't say lawyer and council, it just said lawyer. And so because that was discussed in closed session, that is where I draw the line. I can't do that unless I'm given direction.
Okay, so draw the line, so I got a question for you then. So the lawyer just came up with, oh, we're gonna remove the trees? Somebody had to tell him that was the, that was the council's request. Oh, we're gonna take the house down, we're gonna call the building contractor? Somebody had to notify the lawyer. So somebody in here is talking to the lawyer, okay, that's my point, okay, but nobody's talking to me.
But this was done in closed session, and so everybody in closed session knows that conversation. I did not speak to the lawyer, this was in closed session, and then voted on outside of closed session. This has nothing to do with me personally.
Yes, ma'am, and before the closed session, session started, I said, hey, I understand that, whatever, and I'm here, we can talk with anything, and I don't think that you need to go to closed session. That, just before y'all went to closed session, I sit here and waited, 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 and I thought, well, I guess I won't be part of it, so I went outside, hey, am I going to be a part of this? And so I went on.
We agree to work together.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
You and saying, we'll, we'll see what.
Yes, ma'am.
What we can get done.
But to answer Ms. Bernice's question, it says in my reply, the answer to paragraph three, our plan is to rehabilitate the structure. Phase one will paint the roof and repair or replace when the paint necessary to secure the structure for winter. Okay, that'll help, whatever, and that way it winterize it, so to speak. Yeah, that is the point.
Well, I'll keep in touch with you on the progress, and you can.
Any other questions? I'm sorry if I got loud, but that moment, this, this is ridiculous.
Anyone else, did anyone else sign up?
No.
Does anyone else have any comments?
I have one. Stuart Cameron has been more than a contributing member of this community for over 50 years, and he deserves our respect, not our criticism.
I don't see anybody paying this respect, I will, on this telephone.
I, I don't, I think bringing the attorney into it was a bit much, but we can move on now. Approval of the minutes.
I have my correction under public comment, owners to run for town, you know, that's all I had. It was just a sound.
On the minute.
So you get your copy out, and we'll corrections on you.
Got it, page four.
Can I get a, a motion to approve the minutes, then as amended?
Um, second.
Michelle, second. All in favor of that motion signify by aye. So everybody is, anybody opposed? To carry our bikes, go ahead. The council paid. Anybody else have any questions on the vehicles? The Department of Agriculture. Could you tell me what that is, please?
It's the debt that's on this building, and the water line debt.
That is. We have two different Comcast accounts that you.
We have multiple Comcast accounts, because when the old town manager was here, he canceled a contract, and, oh, he canceled the contract, it still held us liable, so we're paying several Comcast bills at the time. We've been trying to get them resolved, but because he did it outside of the terms and conditions, we have to pay this.
And how long will that go forward?
It's pretty, like, three years. We're trying to get it resolved with the IT department, to get it resolved and see if we can't combine them.
Wasn't it like a five-year thing in the beginning?
Yes, it was five years in the beginning.
Blue Ridge Bank, what, what do we pay them for? There's 2,054 at Blue Ridge Bank. On page nine.
That's, it was probably transferred, I have to ask Kelly what that's exactly for, but it's probably transferred into another account.
Do we write Mrs. School a check, or do we write it to his company?
We write it to his company.
So that's, is, is this a monthly fee, or is this, is he hourly?
He's hourly.
And so, general code, what is that, keep the phone so up?
The general code, yes, but we've transitioned to Muni code, and because we were not getting the items taken care of that we needed to through general code, we don't have a contract with them on a month-to-month basis, so we're going to end up canceling that contract. We have Muni code, we have new code books and a new link that we're using. None of the codes have changed, it's just on our Civic Plus website. We have multiple software items with Civic Plus, so we are using Muni code as one of them. We also have the meetings and agendas from Civic Plus. And there, the way that they process our codes, all the codes that were done and were not codified are now in and codified on our new website link. And anything that we come up, that we have that you guys approve and go into another code or update a code, it goes, it gets sent to them, uploaded, and it shows the edit online, and then they'll codify it the next month.
What's above all?
I'm sorry.
Above all?
Oh, that's our cleaning company.
Their cleaning company, and how often do they come in?
They come once a week.
And Michelle Covert, what, you've lost a couple of people on, what is that?
Christmas decor.
So that's, okay. So that would come out of the fund that you've had, where you have in the budget, the Christmas.
Special events. But, special events.
That's special event, okay. Okay, that's, that's all I have on the actual bills to be paid. So I do have some budget comments, but we can do that after we get through with the business. Motion to, do y'all do this, motion to approve to pay the bill? Yeah, so see, I used to have an emotion that they be paid, instead of they all be paid without us knowing what we're paying for. So we may have to make a little adjustment on that.
Well, they're.
I understand why they do that, but I still would rather have council know what they're paying for before they pay them.
Before, in the previous meetings, they were already paid, even when, even when council was motion to pay them.
Only a few of them, some of them you repay, so you'd avoid them. Okay, so we don't have to prove it for bills? Our treasurer's report.
Kelly is not able to be here tonight, but everything is in the report. If you have questions, we can answer them, and if not, I can get back to you. DM report is a loose paper. Kendra, they've been extremely busy, so she didn't have it in time. And we had canceled the meeting, and then because the packet was already out, and we settled the meeting, it's still loose in here. So I would like to note in the DMV report that Mr. Hemstead, you had asked a question about the revenues, and I addressed that with Kendra, we went back into the spreadsheet that we keep, and noticed that, that the revenue formula was not including all the dates. So we adjusted that, and the revenues are matching almost identically. The revenues will not match identically because, one, it's a tiered revenue percentage for the localities. We only get paid what the DMV will pay us, and it's a 5% to a 3, 4%, 3%, 2%, depending on how much money we bring in and what we make. Two, it will never match all the way completely because of the way the deposits are done. We get deposited once a month, but we deposit into the DMV account every day. But we only receive a deposit once a month. So after they get all their deposits, depending on when they stop their monthly deposits and decides to reconcile, and then they distribute out their percentages through their selects. I would like to, I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but I would like to introduce Terry Byrne. She's our new town clerk. She will be managing the front of the office, taking payments. We'll work together on the agenda, the agenda packets, the minutes, all the record keeping, everything that goes on in the clerk duties. She, this is her second week, she's been doing a great job, and she catches on fast, so.
Thank you, Terry.
You're very welcome.
So any report, do you want to inform the new council members and myself what your regular routines are, so we'll know, or what was it you wanted to include, and let me know.
You mean for operation? It was just for you and I to sit down and talk about whatever you wanted to know as a mayor. I can talk about, we do operations as water for the town. That's our main operation, is the water situation. So we just got our well up and running. We did have an issue with the well over the weekend, so the breaker tripped. We did have to purchase 41,000 gallons worth of water from the county. Royal Pump and Well, who installed the new motor and pump, have been notified, and they're going to set up to come and see exactly what the issue is. It could just be a loose wire when they put the pump back in or the motor together, so we'll figure that out. The other thing that we go through is I get multiple applications or inquiries on zoning or property. The town, as you know, has become a little more attractive to individuals. I do have zoning permits that have been approved for years, and they're just starting to build. So the houses that need townhomes that are being built, they were approved before I got here, and they're being built now. We had Summit IG, which is countywide, they're doing a conduit installation through the county. I think it's pretty much for one of the well-known data centers, but that hasn't, that's never going to be verified, that's just my assumption. They have ran conduit through the town, it caused a little bit of an issue for some of our residents. It caused some issues with the sewer line, with the water meter, so they did pay for a portion of that, that they were responsible for, that caused a problem. We met at the intersection at First Street and Mineral Avenue, because they will be installing manholes. These manholes are for the conduits to go through, they're not drainage manholes. But they wanted to work with the town, because they have two companies, one coming down 22, and then our, the company that was in the town, so Highland and SNL Communications. They're going to have one company manage the whole, the whole project right there, and they're going to go down Frederick's Hall, so that will happen, I believe it's in January. They've been really good to work with. If there's any problems or questions, feel free to reach out, and I can contact them. The other thing that we have going on is we have the Christmas tree lighting, which is on December 12th at six. This year, we've put the tree out front. We will decorate that and decorate the fence. So we've hung the wreaths. It's at six o'clock. Bethel Brews is coming. Dozier Donuts will be here. The church across the street is going to set up a booth. Let's see, I think we're going to have a choir from one of the local churches come. We tried to get the high school band, but they've been pretty busy because of playoffs, so I don't know what their schedule looks like. We also have worked with Resource Council and Santa, Resource Center and Santa Council to set up a donation center with the sleigh out there that was donated by our Roy Lee Payne's family to collect items for local families. And so that's being set up to do that. Oh, and it's in memory of really the event, the collection. The other thing that we do in the town, Kelly's been working on, we just finished working on the taxes. We, you guys may or may not know this, we have a new software system that we implemented last year when Kelly and I came on in April. We implemented it and got it up and running by August. That produces the reports that you see in here and allows us to keep track of the money and shows you what we're spending and what the percentages are left. We also have a utility billing in that software system. The utility billing is for the water and sewer and trash. We don't bill for trash, but it's the town pays for the trash. We bill the citizens for water and sewer. We do have some out of town individuals that pay for water and sewer. That's on the system. Our tax, our taxes are on the system as well as our cemetery is also in the system and business licenses are in the system as well. So we can keep better track of these electronically. We've been working diligently over the last couple of months on the tax information. It's, it takes a lot of work and a lot of detail scanning through the files that we get from the county. So we've done the first phase of our uploads to BMS into our financial system and hope to get the tax mailed out within the next couple of weeks. There's lots of other things. Audits, audits, thank you. So we have our, we're on our 2023 audit. I will say that the audit firm can't start the audit until the accounting firm has finished their reconciliation. Once we get through the 24 reconciliation, we can bring that in-house because we, our software allows us to reconcile our bank statements and all the money within the bank statements and what we pay out and what we get in. So we can do that starting in 2025. But right now, we're still with 2023 audit. The reconciliation is not finished, it's not complete. Once it's complete, it will move to the auditor and this will go smoother because we were able to have everything boxed up and organized. And 24 is the same and 25 is pretty much electronic. So that should go smooth. Um, let's see. The cemetery, we have someone that takes care of the cemetery on a regular basis. We have two other public works individuals that take care of the rest of the town. Hank, as you all know, is our superintendent on that. He, he divvies out all the work and what needs to be done. Sometimes he does it himself, but he has two other people that he does. We have a water operator, Hunter, who's in the audience. He does all of our water testing for, that we have to submit to the health department on quarterly basis or annual basis. So he takes care of all of that. We work together on what's happening with the water. Hank, Central Virginia Contractors does all of our pipe repairs and line replacement. So once we get everything in our system and we start, we fixed all the leaks last year. Once we get everything in the GIS system, we're going to start looking at pipeline replacement. We have a bunch of lines that have several Band-Aids on them that they need to be replaced. We also have a line on Spring Road that I think is detrimental to what's going, the water that's going on Spring Road. So that will be the first one that we look at. We did repair and replace two fire hydrants. One, I think it was at Spring Road and one's at Frederick's Hall. So those have been repaired and replaced. We have grants that we get for litter, grants that we get through the health department right now. We have a grant for the well revitalization, which we've done well four. Now we're going to look at well six. And we also have a grant that pays for an engineer to come up with a plan to develop a well or drill a new well, what that looks like, what we need. We have land, the town owns property at the end of Spring Road. Would be the perfect place to do the well. So we do have well six out there. One of the things that the town is tasked with is getting more source water so that we don't have to rely on the authority all the time. You don't want to use your well all the time, every day. You want to give it a break so that it has time to recuperate. So that's why we have the water authority, because we can get water from. There's plenty more that we do. It's just that's kind of in a nutshell what we are, what's going on.
Would you, new people have any questions?
I just say, I think everybody needs to turn their mic to.
Yeah, turn on your microphones.
Are there any committees?
Y'all don't have the microphone?
Well, as far as the Water and Sewers Committee, I think she needs to know a lot, just to catch up. You know, we, we made a lot of progress in the last year on the water and sewer in terms of gaining grant money and working with professionals to get rid of leaks. We had 50% leaks when we inherited this in March and and that's a lot of water that we were losing. So we have fixed the leaks down to, I mean, about 13% or 8% or something in there. And which is about as good as you can get because you can't get to 100% leak proof water system. It just doesn't occur anywhere. But so, and the reason we, we went to the Rural Water Association asking for help with the and they said, sure, we'll help you, but the way that water is best managed is first you spend the leaks and then you work on the source water. And that's so what, that's what we did. We worked on our leaks. We're working on source water now, which is our wells. And, you know, we went and got grant money and we're working on the wells now. We've got one back that we're working on. Hopefully with the exception of a, something this weekend, we don't know what it is yet. And so we have plans for others. So we have made tremendous progress in the last year on our water system and its security costs and whatnot. And that's kind of where we are.
So how much have you gotten in grades or have you?
90,000.
And has that come in?
Yeah.
You've got?
Yes.
Not, not the total 190. We got approved for it, but you don't get it until you do it. So we've done.
We have flipped around and we got it.
We've gotten that. And now we have 90, which is 45 and 45. And the 45 is for the well revitalization, which we've gotten some of that back because well four is up and running. We're looking at well six now. So we'll have to pay for it and then we get that in return.
And in the budget, in these budget numbers?
It should, on your budget analysis report, you'll see it shows all of the accounts.
Is there water, is there a water grant? The litter grant, then there's the 500 grand grant.
VDH drinking water, 45 and 45. So, and the next 45 will go on the next budget cycle because we don't plan on doing that until the next cycle was the plan. But you'll see the VDH drinking water. It's on page 16.
Okay. So all of this, I guess you gave the well for updated many reports.
How many reports? Do you want to report?
Do you have a, did you have a?
Yeah, I, I have cemetery. Louis has done an excellent job of taking care of the cemetery. I've had so many compliments from the Bishop woman, from Barbara Wilson and all saying that he's done a great job. I wrote down there yesterday, everything looked great. So.
Any more committees? Okay. Well, four, did you finish?
Yeah, I just wanted to just state in here, even though it's written that once well four came back up and running, we, Hunter had been, has been checking it consistently. And at one point in time, well, the well four had pumped 98,000 gallons of water and we had only used 12,000 from the water authority. So, you know, we're watching this and we're going to look at it. The well is only permitted to pump 74,000 gallons per minute. So we'll have to adjust that, but we want to see what the well can do. So we've given it some time. Now with the trip and the motor, we're having to fix that and we'll get that back on and then we'll get it transitioned to where it's supposed to be. That's all.
Well, is there any more?
Oh, you said well six here, that's your next well.
We're just going to look at it. It's, it's just to look at it and see what it's like. From what I'm seeing on the permit, it's not, the well isn't a very good well. But the area that's where well six is, is, seems to be a really viable area. So our next process will be to talk to the engineer and get someone out there to look and do a sonar scan to see where we can pull water from.
And what is the town's daily demand for water? That well four can put out 74,000 gallons.
Well, four can put out 74,000, permitted to.
Now speak.
Yes.
The well is permitted to pump 74 gallons a minute. Presently, at that rate, for the most part, daily average demand since that well has been back on the line and prior to it being offline is approximately 70,000 gallons a day. That's what it's been pumping while it was on the line. There's been days. There was a five day run that the town only got 100 gallons from the county. The well produced everything else. The well was running yesterday morning when I checked it. Probably within an hour after I left, it failed. I got the notification this morning about tank levels. So I came down here and the pump had tripped out. It would not restart. So something electrical is malfunctioning. So right now we are back on the county. But hopefully it's going to be a small fix, a quick fix, and we can get that going.
As Royall said, when are they going to be able to come out?
Not heard anything from them. It was mentioned earlier. They were contacted, but they have not responded back. Any other questions that I can help with?
This is new pump.
Yeah, it was recently pumped motor, if I remember correctly, installed approximately two months ago. No later than three months ago. So it, it should still be under warranty. It's just a matter of getting it out of the hole, plug it shut, and then either repair and or replace. Thank you.
Thanks, Hank.
We were all there since y'all want to go over before we move on. We have neighborhood watch discussion.
This was put on the agenda from a previous council person, but there had been some break-ins down closer to Eighth Street and, and that area. And I'm not really sure what she wanted to discuss, but that's why it's there.
That's like a program I've lived in neighborhood city, I've made the watch. So it's, you need to, it's like volunteers. We have a specific day or whatever and. It's still releasing.
I, I don't, I mean, she just was going to discuss it.
Well, I know I, I look out for my neighbors if there are anything, you know, that I see. Like I've made a call from, about it was somebody was breaking in and it wasn't, it was an uncle. That was your house.
Oh.
But I mean, we all look out for each other neighborwise.
Yeah, I don't know. She, it just, we had had a couple of break-ins down off of Eighth Street and, and Park Avenue, so.
Yeah, there, there were some up at Dunleavy, two instances there that cameras didn't catch. Usually in a small town, everybody looks out for their neighbors. So hopefully we'll see to it. So I, I have historic foundation. Ron, when he was, when he first moved into town, had this, this desire for the historic foundation. And I've asked him if he'd be interested in putting a display up in the town building. And he has said he would love to do that. So he has agreed, but I told him I had to get council's permission to do that. So if you all agree to let him do that, then I would like a motion to allow that.
Where, where can you put it?
Well, there are different places. I see, I, I see a couple of places where we could set it right now, his cabinets. And we have to see what he has first and then we'll, we'll make it work. Because he, he needs, he needs something to do and this is what he likes to do.
Well, I think we, so is this for Ron that we're doing this or?
I think we need to wait until Ron comes in here and tells.
I've already discussed it with.
I didn't ask.
That he would love to do it. So if he can do it, then you give him the opportunity to come in and show you what he wants to make.
Sure. Wait a minute, so let us know what you'd like to do. Can he come in?
I think he needs to come in.
Yeah, we have to have permission to do it first.
Why don't they come in and talk to us about?
Yeah, what he has to do. It's okay for y'all to do that. I mean, there are places here. He could put a cabinet there. There could be a cabinet there, a cabinet over there, wherever you display the historic things. So he wants permission to come in to do this.
Why don't I make a motion, please, you guys permission to come in and listen?
Yeah, you can come talk to council and then we'll decide.
Do you second that, Nancy?
That's right.
Do, do a roll call on that, please, Karen.
Michelle.
Yes.
Bob. Becky.
Yes.
Affen.
Sure.
David. Bernice.
Yeah.
Okay, now I have committees. For this, I will have to type up. And normally I ask what committee you're interested in serving on. When I got the list, there was only one person served me. And I always thought there were two people to make a committee. There, I have put two on, we were each one, we were asking somebody outside of the council to be on the committee with us. And you can also do that, but you need two council people and then one outside person. Because if you do three canceled, then you have to advertise to me. So. I, I have, and we will, we can discuss this. This is something I'm looking at because I've not worked with you all. I'm seeing things that I think need a little bit of change. So we will discuss this hopefully, because I want to go over the budget. There are a few things on here that need to be talked about as soon as we can. Streets, I have. Streets, I have Michelle and Bob. Police and legal matters, Becky and Michelle. Water and sewer, David and Aston. Beautification and litter, Michelle and Becky. Budget and finance, Dave and Atkins. Economic development, Bernice and David, and I'll hit y'all all the copy.
Copy.
Cemetery, Becky and Bob. Personnel, Bernice and Aston. Parks, Bernice and Bob. Communications, Bernice and Michelle. I did not do bylaws update yet. We'll think about this for a week or two and then when we meet back in December, if y'all want to make changes, we can do that. Um also, when you have your organizational meeting, um it's your time to just decide if you want to keep the same vice mayor. Um the job of the vice mayor is to conduct a meeting when the mayor's not there and also act as a co-signer on the check-in. So it's up to council as to whether you want to uh keep the same vice mayor or appoint someone new.
We get a copy of that, I couldn't write.
Yes, I'll type it for you and um send it in an email. I, I really didn't have time to type it up. So are you all okay with uh Michelle staying the vice mayor? Yes.
Yeah.
So you need to make a motion if you want to keep Michelle as the vice mayor. Um so it needs to be in.
For the rest of this year?
No, for the rest of our term. We're, we're reorganizing for the rest of twenty twenty-six.
We mean, well, we specify reorganization meeting in January.
No, it says when you get a new council, doesn't necessarily settle anywhere, it says when there's new council.
I'm not okay with that.
What do you mean?
Um I didn't vote for it in the first place, so I'm not okay with her being at the end of the year.
This, this will be until twenty twenty-six. So there's a motion on the table.
Well, twenty twenty-six is like a month.
No, dear, till the end of twenty twenty-six.
That's the end of the six.
Yeah, so that's what, so Becky made a motion. So for Michelle to be, to continue to be the vice mayor until the end of twenty twenty-six. Do y'all understand? What, which is going? Okay. So was there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Alright, so then we do a roll call vote to see if everybody agrees.
Michelle.
I don't vote.
Yes, you can. You can vote.
Yes.
David.
No.
Aston.
We have to decide this right now, right? You know, I mean, yeah, thanks. Um, no.
Becky.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
You, you call.
Bernice.
No.
So, so it's um was that three and three?
It's tough.
Three and three.
Go ahead. So.
Got it. Okay, so is there another nomination before I, I vote, I'll, I'll say no because split? Is there, y'all have anybody else you want to nominate? Uh is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, uh roll call again, please, Terry.
Michelle. David.
He hasn't been able to be here for a year.
Bernice.
Yes.
Aston. Becky.
I've already voted for Michelle's.
This is a new call.
That's a new month. No.
Bob.
Let's go, yes.
I'll change my vote to yes.
That's fine, they had a majority.
Okay, so can Bernie, are you accepting that position?
Okay.
Okay, so Bernice will be the vice mayor beginning uh. Uh we haven't done that. We, um we'll, we'll get to that.
So it's hard.
Okay, um I guess I will take. Do you all have anything else? Do we see anything else on here that we need to go over before I have some money on the budget?
So, yes. Um can we review the calendar real fast? So in December, there are three public hearings. Two of the public hearings are formalities. Um they were adopted and presented. General Commercial District um was added, is to be added, is to add a use permitted by CUP. The ads were submitted into the paper, so in December, we'll have General Commercial District, we'll have um enforcement and um the PUDs. The other one that's still with planning commission is like commercial.
Do you have that written down? Yes, I see what they, it pertained to. I've not seen those. Have y'all seen those?
Well, because they, you, these were just to let you know that there will be a public hearing.
Right.
Yeah, but we should know what they are.
Yeah.
December meeting.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um. Is that it?
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Um.
I have, I have. Um I might have shown this in the present report, but I want to um specify what happened to the eight hundred thousand dollars in savings of the pound CDs. And I don't understand why the CDs were ever put into individual names. I mean.
I think that, I don't even know.
I mean, you know. Has anybody explained why that was done?
Where were the ones in individual names? Where were they at the bank?
One of them is across the road, they're in here.
Uh maybe, I, I don't know, but that was Bernice brought that up at the last.
But I, that was the one, one, but I don't know where any of the others were.
Right, but I mean, I don't understand why it's put in individual names. But anyway, those CDs were taken and changed into these accounts that were more interest paid because this is ma, Reese Pack did this in twenty twenty-three.
LGI.
And they were put into these funds. So eight hundred thousand dollars is accounted for. Not what you, it was spread around town that it was missing or whatever. And um then somebody made the comment that twenty-four thousand dollars was taken out of a CD just to pay the monthly bills. That is not true. Anybody who goes to Kelly, if she could tell you the exact what's going on. Also, um.
Can I say one thing, Becky? Sure. I don't think that they were in individual names. They were names on the signature card. And they wouldn't give it to the town manager whose name was not on the signature card. Oh, so somebody whose name was on the signature card had to go sign so that they could sell it.
Why were they spread out through different people? That doesn't.
Well, when the, when the money was put in the bank, X Y Z's name was on the signature card and it never got changed.
Hmm.
So Reese Pack couldn't take it out.
Well, he, he did.
Well, he sent me over there and signed it, and then they gave him the money. But then her name and mine were on it, and she was no longer here.
So, but anyway, that's, that's what, that's where that money, that's this money right here. So that was, that was a, a lie that was told.
I got a question. None of that money should have been in the cemetery. So you've got almost five hundred thousand in the cemetery. The rest of that is what you're saying, is the CDs, the eight hundred thousand?
And that money is making money.
That, and oh, if it's making money, then how come it's less than eight hundred? It's less than seven hundred.
Well, they did take money out of the LGIP before we got here to transfer to pay some bills. That was the I'm sure there's a record of that, yes.
Roger, I see it because Becky said we're making money on it and it doesn't.
Every, every month that you look at your treasure, every month that, every every month that you look at your bank accounts and the LGIP bank accounts, you'll see those accounts go up. No money has been removed from those accounts since last year. It can be removed, but it, but it's not the perpetual fund, that's the cemetery fund. But the operating, the LGIP, the bank account, Blue Ridge Bank, not the Spring Grove, but from Blue Ridge, that money can be transferred, but it has not been transferred since last year. When Ed Jarvis was here, they had to transfer money to pay some of the bills. When we took over, Kelly and I went through all of this and we've been able to make sure that the bills are getting paid with the money that we have. She's also collected on past due water bills, past due tax bills that weren't being collected on. So she at one time had collected over forty thousand dollars. So this money is still, we still have this money, and that four hundred and some thousand dollars that you see in there next month will be more.
I make a motion that we give accounting on that because if we started out with eight hundred a year and a half ago or two years ago or whatever, just to give Becky the uh information on interest of money. Finish, please. We ought to know as a council if they were supposedly making money in these CD accounts, how much money was made and how much money was removed and for what reasons it was removed, so that we can understand what happened to the eight hundred thousand.
So all of that.
And we're telling you sure was eight hundred thousand.
It, it should be an easy paper trail. You just go.
We have, we have.
So it should be an easy paper trail. That's all you need to provide. Um I do know you're showing Blue Ridge Bank. Um there was another account in the other bank that I know for sure. I just have to find out.
This is all we had when we came on.
Alright.
There's a motion.
Oh, at four.
Nicole, could you check on the sign at the end of the road that was, that marks Kenan Road, it says Davis Road? And I think it's getting like a lot of GPS confusion. If you go down to the end of the road and turn on Kenan Road, it says Davis.
Oh, because this is Jefferson Davis Highway. That, so I, we don't, so the thing is.
Pendleton.
I know, but we don't control the GPS, yeah.
That's right.
Uh no, Google and Maps and all that, they control that, we don't.
But that's wrong because that's not Davis Road, that's Pendleton.
Yeah.
But we need to, maybe you get the sign changed?
You can put a request in the P O.
There's a sign down there that says Davis Road.
Davis Road.
Oh, I thought you said G I S.
Yeah.
I'll look at the sign.
It's confusing because it's really Pendleton Road.
Right, it is Pendleton Road, yeah. I'll go look at it. There's something at the county they're talking about too, about signs and.
Okay, on the budget analysis. I have just a couple of questions. Um DMV revenue, projected revenue was five hundred thousand. In order to but with what you're um projecting, you would, you would have to take in an average of forty thousand dollars a month. We've gone four months, so we should have uh year-to-date activity to keep up with the budget. It should be a hundred and sixty thousand. It's a hundred and twenty-three.
The projections were based off of the years that we had available, so in.
But I'm, I'm just saying for budget purposes, we need to keep in mind, we are a hundred and sixty minus a hundred and twenty-three short on the first four months of the budget. So you're, you're gonna have to find a way to cut that additional money out of your expenses or um the five hundred, the most we ever made on DMV in all of my years was COVID year. And that was a little over four hundred thousand because we were the only DMV open within miles. So the five hundred may be a little steep for projections. Um and if we need forty-one thousand a month to make the five hundred, we only did thirty thousand last one. And you say these numbers are not exact. Okay, I understand that. But under the first four months, we've taken in a hundred and twenty-three. We should take in a hundred and sixty to stay within budget. So one sixty minus twenty-three is thirty-seven thousand. We're short right now uh for income. That's one thing. Um what is car rental distribution?
That is, um we get that money from within the locality, so that money comes from the state or from the county itself. They get a percentage of the car rentals that are rented and we get a percentage of that in the town.
Right.
It's true.
As long as it's business.
But it's done as a whole.
It's a fact.
As a whole.
Okay, but we get a whole, we get a percentage of the whole thing or just?
Uh we get, I, I don't know how they do it. It's just, it's a percentage for the town. So I'm assuming that it says where it was from and then they disperse that to the town.
Okay, that's interesting. I didn't know. Um real estate, projected a hundred and twenty-five thousand. I know and I have a receipt for an individual that has paid their taxes in October, but it's not showing in here.
It is not showing in here because right now um I, we're doing our tax and uploading our, our accounts to the system. So they have paid it. That money has not been transferred to those appropriate funds because we have to upload our tax information and our file to F M S.
We can record that, okay. Um. Membership dues, what, what do we pay membership dues for?
We, we pay membership dues to uh V M L. Uh we have a membership there. Um Royal Water, uh not Royal, yeah, Virginia Royal Water, we pay a dues there.
Do we belong to the chamber?
We have, we belong to the chamber.
So we have advertising, projected thirty-five hundred. You've already done twenty-one hundred. Saying this only the first four months, so that's gonna be.
That was, that was because we plan for however many public hearings that we think we're gonna have, and we've been over, so we'll have to transfer money um within accounts to do that. We don't need to reappropriate money at this time. We can transfer funds from accounts to do that.
Okay, um internet expense. Projected twenty-four thousand. So far, it's been eleven. So that's one-third. If you multiply that times three, that's gonna, if we continue in the same prop, in the same manner, it's gonna be thirty-three. So that one's gonna be over. Which will be nine thousand.
Sometimes it don't correlate, like with association, you pay your fee once a year and it's right after beginning of year, so it makes sense that it'd be really heavy in the beginning of the year and then the fees are lower later on. Not sure about the that, but.
I'm just looking at this to try to avoid a shortage uh when, when we I, I don't want to wait until the last minute to decide we need to make changes. On here, county water purchases, you're projecting ninety-seven thousand. So far, you've done seventy-four thousand. And that's only a third of the year. So that times three is gonna go way over.
Well, we're not gonna purchase mon, that much from the county because we have the well up and running.
But still, we're, this last month, we purchased eighteen thousand. In order to stay within the budget, you, I think it works out to like eight thousand a month.
Right, but we, with the well up and running, we're not gonna purchase that much water from the county.
Okay, but you have eight months to go. You've only gone in four months. Okay.
May I make a comment?
Sure, because I'm interested in whether we're gonna stay within the budget.
Well, that particular item, I don't think it, now that the well is back up and running, I can go back to my earlier years and I've been with the town approximately twelve years now, believe it or not. Uh when the well was running consistently, the town metal would buy less than two thousand gallons of water on the counter. So I have confidence that if that well continues producing, that that should not be an issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're page sixteen. The page sixteen down at the bottom. Uh general expenses for water projected was twenty. Uh, general expenses for water projected was twenty five thousand, we're already sixty two thousand. So, um, how are we gonna compensate that difference? That's thirty seven thousand that we're, we're gonna be short then.
Yeah.
We'll always be short on water.
There, well, the thing is, is that I think there was a project that, and we need to transfer funds. So the way that I've worked in budgets in my other experience in the government is that when you're working with a budget and within your budget amount, you transfer funds if you need to. And that's how you do that, so you don't have to reappropriate money. That was a particular project, I believe, I have to get with Kelly because I don't know exactly what that line is saying. I have to open up that account and look at it to see what's being placed there. Um, but it, if, it could be that that was supposed to go to the health department.
There is one thing that's looking good, the local sales tax revenue. Um, so far, that's eighteen thousand, you projected four, so I think that one's gonna be good.
Yeah.
What is the line right below, general expenses for water, BTH drinking water?
Drinking water.
What, um, page is that? That, that, what page was that?
Sixteen.
Down the bottom, right below the one you were just talking about.
Okay, what's your question?
BTH drinking RP forty five thousand, what is that?
That's the grant, so you have revenues and you have expenses.
Okay, so with the grant.
That's gonna be going towards well six, using four.
So right now, that's for well four, well six is gonna be during the next budget season. Um, we get, we have a letter that we get ninety thousand dollars, forty five for well re-realization and forty five for in, for the engineering. So part of well six will come out of this and the next forty five will come out of the next budget season, which will be your engineering plan for water. So right now, we're just looking at wells, yes, well six will come out of this.
So the cemetery expenses, this now would be.
Yes, it is.
Is that for the, the rate that's fifteen?
Yes.
D fifteen.
So, you know, whatever happened with the, uh, the lead program, replacing the lead pipes?
Yeah, with that grant got done, we turned our paperwork in.
Well, I still don't see.
Page fifteen. There are no lead pipes, we have galvanized.
Is there maintenance there?
No, but the older houses, do they get replaced?
There's no, so there's no lead pipes that were found, there was galvanized, no. So when they did their reports, um, and it's on GIS and I can share that with everyone and show you what it looks like. It tells you every address that has galvanized, non-led or unknown. We had three unknowns and eighty nine galvanized.
Then do you see, I, I don't see expenses for the cemetery.
Is it lots of expenses?
Well, cemetery stuff is on page fifteen, but that's, um.
That's revenues.
Yeah.
I, I will have to.
Expenses.
Mm-hmm, oh, right. I will have to ask Kelly, uh, about that. We are phasing in the cemetery into FMS. So she, as we get contracts in, their accounts are in FMS currently. As we get new contracts in, they should be entered into the system. Um, we have to phase all of this in, this is taking us a lot of time for the cemetery because some of the information isn't correct. So I'll have to get with Kelly and ask her why the expenses are not pulling in, but we, we have, we don't have expenses for the cemetery other than the, um.
The maintenance.
The maintenance, right, and it should be pulled in here. If she hasn't reported, but it should show what the, uh, approved budget was for that.
So I don't understand it.
If the report isn't pulling it in, I'll have to look into it.
Okay, last page, last one, page seventeen. It says grand total, total revenue four forty two, total expenses four eight. Looks like we're short, right? Thirty eight thousand. Yeah, thirty eight thousand for the first four months. It's, these are just the things I.
Oh, that's just the activity year-to-date.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's activity year-to-date.
Right, and that's.
Well, it's not gonna, it's an estimate and it's never gonna be exact, because it's the activity that you're doing year-to-date. It'll never be exact at all.
When you're thirty eight thousand short, though, it's, it's a concern.
Your budget is always an estimate based on prior years, so we estimate what we're gonna do. We knew we were gonna fix the water, so we estimated that we wouldn't purchase.
But this revenue coming in, so this is what you brought in, right? It doesn't say original budget is where you estimate it, this is activity year-to-date.
That is activity year-to-date, what revenue has been deposited into our bank account.
Exactly, right. So it's showing me we're thirty eight thousand short, and I'm the only one that sees that.
I suggest I talk to Kelly.
Okay, she's good at this, she knows, and I suggest you.
I've done budgets for me.
I'm talking about the year-to-date, not the projected, I mean.
Yes, it's your activity, that's all we can do. And what, the way we do our projections is based on past information. So we project our numbers and maybe this year with the economy the way it is, maybe we won't get that done. Maybe, maybe people aren't paying certain things, I know we're trying to collect on water bills. I know that people aren't, maybe our sales tax is up, but there's other things that are not happening. So I can't, I mean, this is not, I mean, I can control this activity.
That you will judge by quarter, by ten or minimal. Now, obviously, you've got committed to.
It's obvious that.
First quarter, but actually, first four months, it's more than a quarter.
It may, that looks after three.
I, I know one thing, my child, um, Express Lane is closed, we lose the revenue there.
They're opening December first.
Yeah. Mill's Market has plummeted, since they knew ownership, so we've gone to lose revenue there. Um, that's two, two businesses right there, that's.
Now, because of that, you have to adjust your spending. Meaning, um, the first thing I see is the twelve thousand dollar special event. I mean, it, that's something you don't have to have.
So you don't want. You can transfer money, you're, you wanna make your numbers right is what you wanna do, if that's what you're talking about. And that is done normally in governmental budgeting, yes, it is, I understand that, I'm very familiar with that. But this is something Kelly and I have been working on, and again, we're phasing this in. This system just came online last year. We are trying to get through a whole year, we can't get the audits done because we don't have all the paperwork that's being done. So I understand completely where you're coming from and it will be adjusted and Kelly and I will meet and discuss it, yeah.
Okay, anybody else have any more visions? Anybody have any more visions? Can we get a motion to adjourn? By the last?
Yeah.
Next time, Bob will let you make me.
You've changed the map.
I appreciate you.
Bob seconded and I guess they all agreed.